So, does that being recorded?
For attending, I want to remind everyone to please wear masks. We still need to do that at the time being. We will start off with a set of two positive. Oh, and Mr. Sante, please go first.
Good evening, Board, here is Sante, Principal of Big Talent Rising Academy. Just a few things to share with you. First, I wanted to shout out our attendance association for kindergarten and fifth grade classes. We have just over forty K through five students. And last week, we had one kindergarten student move his one day of school. It's pretty incredible when you consider it's over forty kids. And further, the entire third or fourth grade classes had perfect attendance in the last four weeks. So, really excited about that. I want to also let you guys know about older students class that have a discovery program. They're in the process of participating in the NPR Student Podcast Challenge. So, our third year is participating in a podcast in NPR. And the third year is reporting their children themselves and parents. The topic is being killed at the time of COVID and fires. So, their teacher, Mrs. Ward, will be editing these podcasts and have an intro over each of those. So, we're excited to see how those come out and hopefully look at it later on in NPR. And finally, just to let you know from the CSE side, that we officially test season all schools. We'll be getting a test every week, four in my next week. And as far as testing, we will get at all schools from primary grade. So, that's it from NPR.
Good afternoon, Board, and I'm trying to slide. Good afternoon, Board, trying to slide. Principal of Happy New Summer Victory School and in love is in there. I don't know if you have an opportunity to be in the elementary school during Valentine's Day, but it is a great holiday, full of a lot of fun, a lot of sugar. It's a wonderful experience for us all at PPS. After that, I've had conference the very next day. So, just to give a shout out to our staff and our families. We're going to make those connections with some of our families. It was a worthwhile time. Speeding up, we had yesterday was our second Monday of the week. And we have a kind of campaign going on at PPS right now. So, today, they was tied by day. And tomorrow, Super Junior Day. Just want to give a big shout out to Kiki Komor, which is giving a lot of kind of effort for reading things like coloring contests and judges' days and secret pals for the staff. It's just a way to bring some of the good energy to our school. So, I just want to give a shout out again. I also want to give a shout out as a parent to Mrs. Third Street teacher Jeff Westergaard, who together is creating this program that encourages us to listen to you this week. All about reading, how kids feel about reading. So, I just want to encourage people to listen to that. I hope you can copy of it and send it out our way. We can just just sort of give them our humble take on children's perspective, what we're reading needs to do that. So, we can give them a public shout out from NPR. Along with that, Kiki Komor can hit the marina now. Our child development specialists, which is working really hard, helping both students in classrooms with social work on our learning. And this is what publicly recognized them because just immediately really didn't get back on our school this year. As well as Lori Ray Delgado and Wendy Duffy, they're our current office staff members. And they've just been doing a lot of nursing related care. There's a lot of take in just hours and fixing it seems like that. And just done a really great job of handling all that and did a lot of, a lot of, just, you know, self customer service, so to speak. And then finally, I want to share that we had our once our core reading meeting last week, where we did our school-wide idea. And after doing that, we decided to do a school-wide focus on community. So, Sean Slane, our idol teacher, and Pam Ward, our central coach, led our school in adopting the contract that will use school-wide on community reading. And in this science reading into our school. So, it's really cool to see some sort of alignment in our building. And that's it from PPS.
Thank you. I forgot when you're speaking tonight, I'm going to take your mask off while you're speaking and then go back to your seat. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Watson and Board, Heather L. Rogers from Allen Elementary. I am happy to share some special things happening over at TES. Next week, we get the privilege of hosting students from the elementary schools in the district for the Fourth Annual Latin Leadership Conference. So, it's kind of a hybrid conference. Students in the elementary will be viewing the conference together. So, they can be together, but also for goal and safety. So, I'm really excited about that. And they're going to get the opportunity to really learn about the unique and impressive history of some African Americans in our country. So, that's cool. That's next Thursday. Also, next Thursday, I want to give a shout out to Heather Wolf. She's our fourth grade, third, fourth grade teacher. And she's organized that kind of campaign really targeted at girls in grades third through fifth. So, really, there's some unique friendship issues that go on between girls. And so, this campaign is really targeted to the unique kind of conflict that arise between girls. Also, I want to share that we have forged a new partnership with the 4H. Well, it's really the extension office and therefore 4H programs. And so, starting next week, we're having, we're kind of having our first session. It's going to be, they call it, they call it spin classes, which is special interest. And this first one is going to be geared at students in grades one to two and three. They'll be learning about electricity. And we'll also be targeting our tag because those programs will have another one for fourth and fifth after spring break. And then lastly, I just wanted to share that I will be starting kind of a new tradition, new tradition, Dr. Rebecca, about this coffee with the principal ones a month. Hopefully down at Sweet Beach, all that you know, we decide on it in a day for sure. But just in time for community to come together, parents just sit down and have a casual cup of coffee and chat. So, that's it from TES.
Do you need more chair? Man, I remember you saying Madam Chair versus Madam. I think it's like, I say it a little over like that. Sure thing, I'm sure we're working on it. So, I just want to give a shout out and thanks to PTA for bringing on the parent night out this last Saturday. We've got a couple of little 26 school. I think about nineteen families have got an opportunity to drop their kids off. And they'll have a couple of hours to themselves. And along with that, I'd like to recognize and thank Sarah Crawford. She came and helped volunteer in that event. And she was stringing beads when I stopped by. They did a great job helping the kids off. So, that would be very nice to consider. And thank you, Sarah, for that. Appreciate that. I want to thank all the teachers for their efforts to support our families during the conferences on Tuesday. They went above and beyond, in my mind anyway, to really reach out and make connections. And I, participation, participation was very high, the ones that we scheduled conferences with. And the teachers really felt it was a very positive and collaborative conferences with a lot of the parents. And so, that was really good, good news to hear. And we appreciated their efforts anyway. And finally, I'd just like to give a shout out to Rhonda Scoggins for organizing our February letter writing that's taking place at Orchard Hill this month. I didn't, I, we did it, Jeff Westergaard used to do it at Talent Elementary School. So, I didn't know if Orchard Hill did it until this year. Anyway, all the students were out the building, writing letters to each other and to staff members. And then Mrs. Scoggins' graders are the male delivers and delivering the letters and sharing them. It's wonderful to see that we're still adhering on that tradition of handwriting and letters and organizing it and everything like that. So, that's it from Orchard Hill for tonight. I have other thoughts, but I got to tighten them up for the next one. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board, Chairperson. Sorry. Thanks for being messed up there. Kidler Lear Principal at Talent School. I personally want to start, maybe I'd like to share a little data today in point with you. We were here two weeks ago and I'm sure it's good news about our iReady testing. We were selected nationally to participate in the NAEP testing. We did that last Tuesday. It's the National Assessment of Educational Progress. The data point that I can give you, according to Dr. Stewart, who came from, from the organization, is our attendance was over ninety percent. So, they did not have to come back. Instead of middle schools in Southern Oregon, they test all over Oregon. I believe that we were one of the only schools who we didn't have to have a, some retake stake. And so, I'm proud of our kids for coming and doing their best on those tests. I do want to recognize and thank the first grade teacher at Talent Elementary. They have partnered with some of our students and had doing pen pals. They write letters back and forth. Today, the first graders came over and there's a long time former elementary principal, fantasy first graders in the school building. They came in and actually exchanged letters with, with our middle schoolers and after school and some of our middle schoolers for showing me their letters from their first grade pen pals. It was a delight to see the little ones in, in the middle school. And thanks Heather for supporting that great program. I also want to thank Felipe Reyes. He organized Pirates to Raiders of it the other night. Thank you very much for coming too. It was very good to see so many parents in the building once again. Probably, I don't know, seventy-five parents came to support their kids in, in those endeavors. We also recently celebrated National School Counselors Week. And I want to thank Derek Rodman and Jordan Rees for their great commitment to our kids and our systems at Talent School. Also, we have some excellent extra partners that I love working with. Caitlin Bishop from Clevelandica and also our new R and Carol Schroger. They're just very valuable partnerships and we value that they're great too. Thank you.
Madam Chair Watson, Board, and Chair Principal of the High School. That is the most stressful thing. It's like, how do I address Board, I've got two teachers' notes. Can you set on myself a sleeping pill? But it's not always, it's not always. I just, if you can, Caitlin Bishop, a lot of which I already gave our idea. A conference this last, I mean, we had a conference, what was that? Tuesday night, oh my gosh, okay. We made that our conference for Sa versus seniors, or excuse me, Sa versus juniors. And that was our conference for my ninth graders, fourth grade graders. I don't know why, like you heard about elementary school. It's just a great system. A lot of people are building and it's just on. I think I got a lot of work every day, it's just on. A lot of work is this building every day. It's just on. It's still very great for personal part of community. That's such a beautiful facility. We sell, we sell like Valentine's Day, we're going to leave, we have a national stuff animal day. I forgot, who's stuff animals? The boyfriends, the children that that year. I just use it, my girlfriend, like those heart shaped with the various candies and chocolates. We had so many stuffed animals. I think they might be a pushing kitchen, should not ask that. A whole list of things on my hat. We got Valentine's Day, the high school, very, very fierce, very, very ra ra. That's always in my house. National School Counselors Week was last week. We have that phenomenal group, Big Four Council Department, Michelle House, and Helen Billows, and my, and then Tori CoCo. The work we do with kids behind the scenes, I don't know how to say it, but the work we're doing with kids and families and that, that students support, that they can't buy, is absolutely crucial for them, for their attendance, not having success. Success has one say, so, so, very, very grateful, very grateful for that group. Also, it's National School Day, ours is here. I want to say I have a bunch of nice things to say about it, but if I keep talking, it doesn't have to get big anymore than our. But then, just as I'm on this, I worked with, I was trying to have more, I've been one since I've been in these high schools. And by far, he is the best of the kind of students, family and community that I have ever seen. We're extremely blessed, I have, and it's just absolutely amazing resource for us. Well, Valentine's Day coming up next Thursday and Helen Billows, our council leader, is on that, is working on that, trying to reunite your family. We're going to try to bring back some family and family for all our families. Once we get past the masks and the COVID part, we're looking forward to reenacting our families in fun, school-wide events. With that, I'm going to turn over to Madam Chair. I have a, what about your, what about your, this is Principal of the High School. We've had several students who recently committed and are out of these state competitions coming up. Five of them, five of these weekend states women meet Portland, I grew with Heidi Taylor, so, so, yes, double field, Ryan Fox, Jackson Fisher, Lauren Jensen. Two Pirates represent us, the state wrestling tournament sale of February twenty-sixth, Joey Painter and Marcelo Marco, district championship on level balls last weekend. The new facility continues to be used a lot and we're really happy with that. We're hosting volleyball tournaments regularly, JPL Sports, we finished up last night with ninety little soccer players and their families. This week, we'll have our own school play right here in theater and also supposed to be on LA companies. We're really excited about that. We keep getting more comfortable in this facility and communities are really enjoying it. Our last ball basketball games are Tuesday night. It's Tropal Night, Senior Night, Color Guard, Pep and War. We'll have our middle school basketball teams in the crowd. All of our varsity games are live stream by our sports media team of Mr. Lawler. And our trophies are coming out of stores. So, next time you're in here, we'll have starting trophy cases. We've had a lot of this in store for come years with custom off our vision group. I'll help with that and we are ready to go.
Thank you very much. Any board members, staff, how many is under the positive?
I have them. Okay. You'll see on your table that there's something left missing from Arm Dillachack. They gave us that, that was very nice and I would bring those by. I think Sarah and I were there to witness the opening of the facilities building that's magical over in the other parts of campus. It's very odd to see that building way far away from other buildings. I still think that we need Frank Clark and Kim Kaiser to come visit that building. I was able to help the judge attend the speech debate tournament that was held at Raider's this past weekend for first one in two and a half years. So, we've been in person here locally and we had a great time. It was great to see everyone present. Also, I understand that some DECA competitors are already headed to Nationals after this past weekend. And I'm really excited to hear about how they do and the fact that they can do it around there. Also, today, in the headroom from Ryan Robinson, that's the Southern Oregon ESD, that there was some funding, some city funded these grants that were approved and that will impact our school, which I'm going to be stoked about. So, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay.
The facilities, if anyone gets an opportunity to go tour that, John found historical pictures of Phoenix and of Phoenix Elementary and Talent High School that are on the wall in his, in the conference room over there and a really old map. So, really fun to see some of the history of the district and then displayed so really beautifully over there as well. They did, it's going to be such a really great functional space for them. So, kudos to RW and the Droid, which were both there as well as really great partners and continuing to help us have really great spaces for our district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing them, we will move to new representative, this is Delia. I'd like to go first, please.
There we go. Can you hear me? Hi. Valentine's Day just passed and it was, it was really nice to see the students. I don't know, I can't explain it. I didn't really see much of like boyfriend or girlfriend stuff. I saw a lot of kindness between friends. And that was really nice to see because Valentine's Day, people usually joke about being single and stuff like that. And they're like, ah, I'm single, ha, ha. This is my day, isn't it? Being all sarcastic. So, it was really nice because there was a lot of friends passing out gifts to their other friends. And it was just really nice to see and be there for it. I know that we're all looking forward to a three-day weekend due to the president's day coming up as well. And especially with spring break, even though it feels like winter break just passed, we're all extremely excited to have a week off for spring. Because of how our weekend party, things have been really busy. But getting to band, we tomorrow, we are going to be playing Pet Band music for our very last time at the basketball game tomorrow at six. So, if you haven't seen Pet Band yet, be sure to make it to that. And also, Color Guard is going to be performing, performing for the last time tomorrow as well at the basketball game during halftime tomorrow at six. We have been working extremely hard on our show, Luigi's Restaurant Take. There's been a lot of emotion put into it. There's a lot of love that was put into it with Maggie, our Color Guard coach, supporting us. We're all extremely happy to be performing live because that's something we haven't been able to do in a really long time. So, that's really nice. And we're also debating on a date for our band concert coming up next month in, what is next month? Sorry, I forgot dates for March, March. Next month in March, we're planning rather the ten or the fifteen. It really depends on students' preference. That's why we don't really necessarily know yet because we do have some solo contests coming up, which are really important. We have two students who are competing in the solo content, solo, solo contest, Kyle Willman and Adriana Hayes. So, that's, that's really exciting. We are also debating on having our parade, rather Parabola or the Azalea, or possibly both. We actually talked about this yesterday. And we have decided that the majority of us really want to do the parade, which I'm excited for because I never was able to do the parades due to COVID happening. So, this will be my first parade and I'm really excited for that. There'll probably be more updates on that, but really excited for that. And also, Drum Line is now up for middle schoolers and high schoolers to learn drumming and percussion skills, which is really exciting because I feel like with drumming and percussion, that's how beginner band kids learn how to read rhythms and stuff like that. So, it's really convenient and it's really nice to see middle schoolers coming in as well. So, that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you. And you can be excused to go to the outdoor, perhaps, if you would like.
Thank you. You have a good night. You too. Hello, everybody. I don't have much for today, but leadership just finished handing out and packaging stuff for every student at Valentine's Day. And I think everybody appreciates having a special treat on that day. And leadership is starting crop preparation and we're having it at the Ashland Springs Hotel like it's usually been. And I think everybody is ready for that special moment that everybody talks about in the music and everything. It probably happened after the last few years. MTRP DECA did just miss their competition. And I know that three of the boys got into Nationals and then Eva Robinson, the girls' team was the one to compete in public. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next up is existence comments. Sorry, this is always a long story to read. As a reminder, we need that the board directors are meeting in the public, in the public, not of the public. However, the board welcomes comments during this. This is comment portion of the agenda, each person's hour allotted for three minutes speed with thirty minutes time limit for testimony. During substance comments, the board will solicit or narrow purposes without expecting responses to your comments from the board during the meeting. The board not hear complaints directed toward an employee in public, including complaints in which the employee is not named or clearly identify a will in context. Complaint should be presented to the employee, immediate supervisor, in person or in writing in accordance with the board policy, KAL. If you are joining virtually and wish to provide public comments, please utilize the range of man, teacher or the chat teacher. All oral comments and chat comments are electronically recorded. Any comments from those joining the meeting virtually are subject to public meeting law. If you are in person and the board signs up, I will. I want to say like, when entering this, that will give me a sign that I have them. When I call your name, please have the mic as close as possible. You may pull down your mask, speak to the mic and ask to go back to the board where you choose your seat. If you are virtual, please unmute yourself, have your camera turned on and speak clearly. We are limited for virtual comments to parents, students and community members in the meeting's talent school boundaries. For the record, please state your name and any word you would say on your permit. If you were, if you've submitted written comments, please summarize, submit a report to the board. Please respect and limit your time for three minutes. As a reminder, you may also submit written comment by completing the comment form, which is located on the website under the board's board tab. Written comments should be submitted no later than five p.m. on the date of the meeting. Comments received are shared with the board. If comments are not submitted via the form, they will not be considered, be considered public. Comment is very important. They go through the form so that we can be recorded and processed more correctly. The district has a, the district website has the F and Q section under the board tab with comments and the ask questions. I will start the public comment now and first up is Zach Moody. And then Mark Laflin will be next.
Good morning, Board Chair. Just like to take a moment, I'm in Zach Moody. And a couple of things about process, I spoke into a couple of different times. And there's never been discussions about it, so it's, it doesn't alleviate itself to concern the board or something that's never ever been discussed outside. The school board agenda is set up in such a way that if you truly want a little participation, you're not going to go get it. And the reason is, we've been so, 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 just set up that you don't know whether to speak with it until that time happens. And it's the end of the meeting or the end of the meeting, they're, they're, they're personalizing the board. So, there's a whole discussion section there that the public is not an opportunity to comment on because the comment section is getting in the meeting. So, just like when we had the other city or county or another board, this is the type of thing they do is they allow people to comment on what they think behind themselves. So, staff gives a report, public has an opportunity to comment. It's the best way, in my opinion, for people to be able to admit any of their concern and choose your private comment, since the little comments are provided to the board. And as, as Juan Juan says, that they're providing through this specific board, they don't get into that one. I sent an email to a couple of board members last week regarding the situation of bullying. And I, I, I received a call from a student who was, I see it. And I sent an email to her, I asked if it included in my record. For whatever that was, it did not go through that process and it was not included in my meeting with the public city. And I don't know, I'm trying to read it, I don't think. But I, I would encourage the board, for those who haven't seen it, to do it, to read it, I would be sensitive if it didn't include a comment section. For the next meeting, hopefully you guys will have an opportunity to discuss the concern that was raised. By myself, probably there were other folks. Last night, I want to say, I did send an email to, to the board, I received a response. There's a second. And yeah, so, I appreciate your response and resolve to try to solve all problem. But we know followers is an issue that most people don't have our time with today. And I think the board needs to focus on that. Thank you.
Just for on the comment, I wouldn't want to let you speak, okay? After public comment.
Sorry, what was that?
I saw that you came in late and if you want to speak, I'll let you after public comment. Okay. The next up is Mark Laflin.
All right, hello. I was here last, last time too. And it was, it was really great. I felt like, I didn't feel that hurt, it was, it was convenient, I talked a little ago. And it's, I thought of another, another. And I thought of another, another step for today, which is really around with my concerns and I know a lot of parents' concerns around mandates. And I know that the data that Mark 31th for the, for the mask mandates going away. So I wouldn't imagine things are going to happen. We need that with that. Um, and my concern really is that it's from this whole thing. It's not, it's more than this is more difficult decisions that I would think and I imagine a lot of parents would think. Um, are not the place that this school should have to worry about at all. They're having to police things that you shouldn't have to police. Things that could be better put on the parents', the parents' decisions for their children. And um, and just thinking that with the route things have gone in these last couple of years, I hope that the stable does just drop them as they, that will be, that will be up to parents then. But I also know that um, it may not be the case, right? It may be something when I'm worried that at some point it will become something where it's children who are vaccinated and they will be able to have masks on. So children who are vaccinated will not be able to do that. And I know that that could be a worry that is unfounded. That may not be the case, right? But um, but it is a concern of mine seeing what has happened. What I would love to have is simply a, a motion or a vote of um, that if that is the case, if the state is to do something like that, what will we do with immunity? And when I think of these things, I, I, when I'm talking about these things, I think in terms of right, infancy on the side of, I understand that people have different experiences, different desires, different fears. Want different things in our lives. So many different things that make us our own unique selves. And that, that, but yet in the end, right? Are our, our governments that are giving non-mandates and rules and things like that, they have narrowed it down to make it very, very clear distinction where there could be hundreds of different things. Instead, there's, there's two, right? And that, that, I mean, what I see is the principle of this, I want to be modeling for our children and for our communities. The principle of infancy that supersedes me, this idea of the one versus the other. Particularly now when there is so much, so much scientific evidence showing that it is not like, there's, there is a lot of credence to the other side. So my big ask is just how can we as parents who are concerned, how can we support you to feel safe in standing up for that sort of thing if it comes to that? And thank you.
Thank you. That I don't have any more public comments and I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand or in the chat. Oh, did someone raise their hand? Okay. I have not seen that on my screen. Sarah, can you tell me? Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Lindsay, um, can you please unmute yourself and thank you for having your camera on?
I think I am unmuted.
Oh, just one, one second. We're going to turn it up a tad. We can't quite, you can barely hear you. I apologize. One second.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me now?
Not quite.
Hello.
I can maybe turn on my speaker to turn that off? Okay.
I can't really hear you all now, but can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good.
Okay, great. Then I'll just continue. Um, I'm speaking with you all. Hello, I'm Lindsay. Uh, I'm speaking with you all tonight as a mom of kids at schools in this district and as a community member. People for I Pod University, there is not one way to live and the strength of the society can be correlated to how many divergent voices it is able to hold simultaneously. To me, it looks like our state and federal governments have put our local schools into a position you should never have been in, where you will not receive certain funding unless you enforce and encourage selective medical strategies. If the strategy was in fact without negative consequences or if it was highly effective, then it could be an area of compromise. But if we follow the science, not the news coverage of science, we'll see that the scientific literature is far from agreeing about the effectiveness in the whole person's safety of mandatory masking and promoting the shot. The raw numbers show that masks, even the K N ninety-five, are not particularly effective. Basic human biology makes it clear that breathing increased carbon dioxide should not be labeled as healthy or without negative consequences. Furthermore, the same fields of human psychology that could help us understand the need for allowing our children to be diverse tells us the negative psychological effects of masking. I've spoken in past meetings about the biology and safety concerns in regards to the shot. I've spoken about how according to the CDC, the CDC director and Dr. Fauci in his New York Times November twelfth interview, the COVID vaccine does not prevent infection or transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, nor will it prevent serious injury, hospitalization, or death anymore. Regardless of anyone's individual opinions, my own included, the data in regards to safety and efficacy of the shots and the efficacy of masks is far from settled. It logically follows that in the presence of inconclusive data, caution should be used. In the past, I've asked the board a few times now that if this shot does not prevent transmission or infection and we do not know long-term side effects of the shot, then why is the school district sending emails and letters home encouraging families to get vaccinated? Why are unvaccinated parents not allowed to volunteer? Again, why are you creating more fear and divide amongst students, parents, and the community if you follow the raw science? There is not support for mask mandates for the shot in children. And asking a parent to do something to their children, they believe to their bones is detrimental is a position you should have never been forced into. When there is risk and the science says there is, there must be choice. There is strength in diversity, not weakness. And there are many of us who will support you in allowing parents to make their own choices without all mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry I came in late.
Oh, that's okay.
I have a couple of things to share. First, um, I'm part of the club Brain Bowl and they are preparing to go to the Brain Bowl competition at F S U in a couple of weeks. And so far it's looking good and we've got a couple teams ready to go. And another thing, um, I'm also taking the school's new financial literacy class. And so far it's been really helpful and really insightful as to how to manage money. And I think that the school is doing a really good job with the curriculum and it's it's going to help me to manage my money better in my life. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. Okay, um, I'm closing. Wait. I just got a message that people of the board cannot hear us. Okay, I'm closing the jury. Or not the jury, like, oh, sorry. And we will go to superintendent report. Mr. Barrett is gone, but Tiffany Lambert is here and I am so excited. I'm going to join us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I did announce for barriers superintendent and I started by apologizing for not having a chance to. But I would say that if I were to think of this as the first time I was a barrier in a non-homic school board meeting and the first time I assisted superintendent in a community play, so I think that's pretty great difference. Hopefully that's not like there is an association there. She started by saying that masking and the lifting of the indoor mask mandate is a major topic of conversation. Our district team is working on planning for our transition. Right now we're gathering information from staff and families. We did send out surveys of both the staff and families. The family survey went out yesterday. We haven't filled that out yet. We know the difficulty that the indoor mask mandate will create some anxiety, no matter what your feelings are on masks and mandates. But we will do our best as a district to ease the angst and have a safe environment for our students and our staff. We will make sure that we keep our board and community updated on the progress and transition plans until we near spring break. We also continue to work with our license association through interest-based bargaining. And we hope to have agreements prior to a meeting for spring break, just in time for hiring season. So we're in a position to share with potential employees that we have a solid contract for three years to come. This is a recruiting and retention tool that we feel is very important. The next House bill, forty twenty-six, our A D M security bill, is moving quickly through the session. It should be within the wings and beams this week. We'll keep you updated on hearing and how to continue to advocate this bill. We're getting closer. Excited about that. Um, and finally, if your full holders has a copy of board policy A R I I A, which clarifies the process if there's a challenge to any instructional material. Our current A R is from nineteen ninety-nine. Before many of our students, I think all of our students were born. It's a lengthy and cumbersome process and it's not really accessible for our public and our families. The new reg is simple, clear, follows very reasonable steps. As you know, most administrative regulations don't need formal approval, but do need to be shared with the board. And this is one of those factors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, approval of this agenda, approval of minutes from February third, um, personnel reports and board policy rewrite sections C and D. Do I have a motion?
I approve approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Michael. Any discussion on this? Hearing that, present agenda passes. Next is action item. Next is action item S O E S D, local service plan.
Yes, this was a review last meeting. We did value partnership with the E S D and the and we feel this is not a decision of ours.
Any questions about this is, or someone makes a motion?
Make your motion.
Yes.
I approve the board approve the S O E S D twenty-two, twenty-three, local service plan and student success tag. And since, since the board lay up, that's represented.
I'll second that. Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Polly. Um, any discussion before I take it to a vote? Hearing that, we'll take it to a vote. Uh, Polly.
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Rick?
Definitely yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Action passes. It is time for a recess. Should we continue? We can wait five, six, seven minutes for a recess? Okay. We're on recess for a few minutes. Thank you for the wire. There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you for the quick break. Sorry about all the technical difficulties. Um, we are now on immigration discussion facilities and bond update.
Madam Chair, John McKeever has been there today. He clarified we need to remind you that the board, there is a new request. For the board to consider taking action on this time, if the board does agree to, if there are items for letting go of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any question, anybody have a question? Well, if you have a question about that, I don't think John is here, but I believe they can bring you absolutely back right here. If you have questions on it, please feel free to ask. Moving on to the financial update. Thank you for waiting. I know you're by yourself.
Good evening, other chairmen, boards. I guess we're grabbing at the right group counting. So for the financial report, I have the year-to-date updated from July to January of this year. Um, revenues, the current balance that we have for January thirty-first is seventeen million, seven hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, if you look all the way to your right on the business column, you'll see that the revenues through January are lower by a million, one hundred eighty thousand dollars than the prior year for the same period of time. And most of it is due to lower state support on revenues. Um, and in all the revenues, we had S one included in general from last year, so um, so it's really not as much that is toward that. Um, expenditures are higher by eight hundred eighty-one thousand for the same period of time than last year. And it's mainly due to salaries, transportation, and sub-services for this year. Our current ending fund balance projection for twenty-one, twenty-two is about one point two eight million higher than anticipated. And um, this is with the current state support fund estimates that we have. Um, with the passing of House Bill forty twenty-six, this will provide us with an additional two point four six million dollars, which will allow us to carry forward with the progress that we have in the staffing levels for the next few years. Um, now going to the next page for the capital projects fund, the bond fund. Um, the balance that we have through January thirty-first is five million, seven hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, and for the construction excess tax fund, the balance through January thirty-first is five hundred ten thousand dollars. And I think that's all I have for now. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much for coming in and making. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next up is legislation and O S B A update. Sarah, do you want to start off on legislation and O S B A update? Or would you like me? Okay, you fill the gap. I was thinking you were the first and I fill the gap. We'll see how well this goes. I think that's next. So to piggyback on Tiffany and Brent's letter tomorrow at um, I don't know what time it is, the ways in need will be wholly passing in the um, H B forty twenty-six and then we will be done and be able to fully deliver at night. So tomorrow, I'm not sure what time, um, the, I think it was nine. Um, there was also um, Smith Warner, this is a unique situation. And Sarah might have to help me. Smith Warner has asked for a budget note to invest in literacy, literacy. Literary, um, who was the ones?
Right, science and reading training?
Okay. Anyways, it's, you needed that they would assign money to um, to a certain program, but it's been asked, um, Phoenix Town had three rules, I believe, all elementary rules that would raise the funding for this. Medford School, board members reached out to a few of us, um, Sarah and I are O S B A um, representative and Michael because they, like Michael, since he was a member with them. Um, I talked to Lori today. She said that this is going to be the last bill right before they close the legislation process up. Um, there were two memos sent out, uh, excuse me, and um, and they made tools of the board. So Lori is reminding everyone when you send an email to your legislators, CC her and Richard, because then she can go back and piggyback, piggyback on, oh, Phoenix Town sent you information about their school and houses, and you need to kind of resubmit it, and then they know how many schools are or whatever you're writing your legislators. Because sometimes things get through the cracks, and if Lori already know, they can help. Your voice may hurt maybe multiple times. And then OSBA notes that what's important for their members as well. So that is helpful for much of that. OSBA also sent us a new video, like we're giving promise. I don't know if they were supposed to send out a link immediately, Sarah? They're supposed to send out a link immediately. They have pamphlets now. Their new slogan is, "We're here for you." And this is every, I don't know why they use this to every region of OSBA representative, but they did a whole thing back. So if you know anyone, the ones who know about OSBA, I have a nice colored pamphlet for more of that. And then legislation policy, we changed the way that we're adding our goals for the next legislative session. And they want to be more, make sure they're caring for everybody in the district in the past, and hasn't been as well. So we're really concentrating. Oh, my math's not. We're really not concentrating on making sure that all our works get a voice in different regions as well, like Sarah and I are going to work on developing that. So I'm excited that they're realizing that some regions are not on the other side. So we'll really, this new plan will help. Sarah, did I forget anything? I'm sure I did.
No, I think that was great. I was just, so there's a legislative call on Fridays with updates of bills related to education that are ongoing process. And one is mandatory board training and how that would roll out for schools to be informed of what, I think, what we can and can't do. And so that one's, OSBA has been supportive of both of that. And then there's also a superintendent protection. Is that the best way to say it?
Uh huh.
Bill where a superintendent can't be fired for following state law. And so those are a couple of, it did pass the Senate. Both, the one passed the Senate and is headed to the House. So we'll get an update tomorrow, the superintendent one. And then the board one hasn't passed either house yet, either chamber yet. Is that correct?
Yes.
So they're still deliberating and making final tweaks, but I think they are hopeful that those will both be voted on in this short session. And it really is a short session and coming on really on the tail end, because so much of the work for this session has happened over the last 18 months, and which is what the conversation is now for the next long session. And so it's really been interesting. And then also to the funding, there, since the state, since the state budget is doing really well, there's a lot of, they call legacy projects kind of being proposed. And since there's money in the budget, there may be some things getting movement that, or being well-funded that possibly wouldn't have been funded in a different budget plan. So those are the things that, so that's what I have learned, and that's what I'm sharing with you.
Thank you. And I think the superintendent was, the hearing closed yesterday for whatever, I think, for the House. So the hearing closed, I think they have not voted, but the first hearing closed. I was looking through notes this morning. And then another thing I thought was really interesting too was that I've had the other school board members in our regions saying, you know, why is OSBA, we're working on this superintendent bill and the mandate bill. And Lori said that, you know, legislators are coming to them and saying, you know, hey, what's going on? And so they are jumping in because they're trying to be a voice. Sometimes we can have a compromise. Also, the school board mandatory training, I think in the beginning will be, like you said, what you can and cannot do. But then they faded, they're trying to make it so it's more flexible for the board. So if there's a board that wants to concentrate on DEI training for the board, then they could. If there was more work that wanted to concentrate more on budgeting, they could. And then it makes it flexible so the board can follow training with their, with their board goals. And it's not just, you know, we need to learn how to train to make it more useful for a good board. Any questions? Okay. Next is the elder male buyer update.
They are only meeting once a month now, so I don't have anything until next week.
My Michael or Tiffany? Do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
We have an update on the gateway project of her participation. They're there. How that's going, do you know? I haven't heard anything.
Last I heard, I think there were around 10 trailers, the 53, I believe, that were still empty, but would be filling out. So they're still doing Wednesday movement dates. But I don't anticipate that it will be doping empty spaces much longer.
That's good to hear. I agree.
I apologize for not asking this question earlier. But on the news tonight, before it came to the meeting, there was a story about those in the FEMA trailers having to start paying rent. And I realized that March, April 1st, we're coming up on that, the 18-month timeframe from after the date of the event where the potential for the FEMA properties, and I didn't know if anyone had heard, if I had heard, I think in the beginning, that those could possibly be extended up to a year for rent, not rent-free, but rent forgiveness or no charge or something. And I didn't know if anybody had heard if that had been extended or applied for, or if the families that were in the FEMA trailers, which feels like they just got there. We're going to actually have to start paying rent March 1st or April 1st. And I apologize for not asking earlier.
I believe that that is true, but don't quote me on it. But I believe that they did extend it for a longer period. But I remember what that is.
I heard from a family, I asked a family that I know. And they said, I said, did you get extended to stay in your trailer? And they said, yes, but they had rent. They were going to have to pay rent, but they were having some difficult issues figuring out what that rent would be. And so we don't know the answer. And I don't, yeah, that's, I was told that like last week.
Try to find out in the next meeting. Let's go on with that. Yeah.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Anything else on this before I move on? Superintendent evaluation. So I said I would write. I didn't realize how soon. I wrote my letter when I was sending it to you guys and we were related at the next meeting. And I'll tell you this one, I apologize, I have not done that. I was for some reason thinking I have longer. So I do have longer. This is not due until later, and I'm a procrastinator. I apologize for that. Another thing I wanted to bring up, though, during this section is I think we had a really great conversation and really good ideas and recommendations. However, the format that superintendent review was is that it was each person would state something. So I feel like there was some great conversation, but the board themselves did not have a chance in that format to have discussion. So I feel like there are several items we should bring up on future information and discussion so that we clarify something, I know I had some questions. And then we discuss, and I think there was some great ideas and great things mentioned, and I want to, this board is really good at collaborating and building on one little idea and making it great. And I really like to, so I'm open to you here. I think I'd all agree that we should bring some of those items into information and discussion in our next meetings. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Teacher, excuse me, teacher and administration contract renewed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A reminder that the annual requirement to give renewals to staff is due by March 15th. That's when we give our renewals to our employees that will come up for board action to approve.
Okay. Any questions? Commenting?
Will you guys speak through the bargaining process by that time you're anticipating?
I don't answer some days that will be done with that, but we'll know who's getting a renewed contract from it. The staff will still sometimes turn it in for that. But we do need to get it to them more expectantly.
This is individual contracts rather than the bargaining contract.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on to the SIAP update. Tiffany?
Thanks again, Madam Chair. Thinking board holders is just a slideshow that we're using with our listening sessions. This shows the questions that we ask. They're very broad, just to get some information from our stakeholders. The student investment account, as you know, is through the corporate tax in Oregon. This year, we received $1,218,850 from that. In the slide, you can see what we have spent the funds on. There are some other expenditures that are like just a few hundred dollars. I just put the major ones. Most of our SIA funds do go for a clinical contract. But each year, we do collect information. We have sent surveys to our families in November during the conference time. We have surveyed our staff through the Southern Oregon Educators Network, looked at that feedback to get that information. And we're now starting my family listening session this month. Our next one is February 24th. That is for our parents and families of students with disabilities. The meeting for our English-speaking families is 5:00 to 5:45. And for our Spanish-speaking families starts at 5:45 to 6:30. Board members are welcome to listen in. And then we have a general session, just a general listening session on February 28th. Again, for our English-speaking families, 5:00 to 5:45. For our Spanish-speaking families, 5:45 to 6:30. Those are visal for that. We do take that information from the listening sessions, from the surveys, and our student investment account committee does bring those all together, categorize that. Some of that feedback is specific for SIA. If we look at the well-rounded education, reducing class sizes, expanded learning opportunities, and safe schools and mental health. And some is also for our HESR, our Emergency, our Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Act. Those funds also require stakeholder engagement. The same categories as student investment account, but also included migrant families, which we've already did before. And then families of incarcerated youth that we also get feedback from. And we take that to look at how we're going to spend those funds. Those are just going to go until 2025. Those are specific for pandemic recovery for that. And then we also in the past have gotten some feedback that really didn't have to do with SIA or HESR. First time I vote with HESR. But we've received feedback in Florida, for example, that our families wanted fresher food in the cafeteria and different packaging for the meals. So we were able to give that feedback to SEDEX. So they did change that. You often see some local produce that they're serving, and they now serve the food in clam shells versus some snacks that they had before. So this is a great way for us, not just to get information for the student investment account, but also for decisions that are just being made. And again, we will give that feedback to the board and share back with the community. So perhaps it can help smooth your decisions for policies that you make as well. Any questions about that process?
This is not the listening session next Thursday, is it? That's separate from that, correct?
The listening session on the 24th is for the SIA.
It is, okay.
Really targeting our families of students with disabilities.
Okay.
And then the one on the 28th is a general session.
It's important in it. Okay, got it.
Did at one point we talk, or was it talked about having them in person too? Or has it always just been virtual?
We had them in person a few years back, and they were well-attended when we had them in person. Because of the pandemic, we've had them virtually. And they're not as well-attended when they're virtual, but we need to plan these in advance. It's hard to know what our COVID numbers are going to be. So they're virtual again this time. We did have our students' listening sessions in person though this year. That was fun. I was known for bringing pizza on Wednesdays to the high school once a year. So last year, they were virtual.
Are you still sitting on these as a board?
So, good question, Sarah. So these, anyone who's attended, and I probably will attend. I have passed, I attend the SIA listening session for students with disabilities as a parent and as a board member. I was right at the beginning and said, you're as good. But I'm also a board member to let you know. And then there's an SIA committee that gathers, that puts all the data together that you can be on. And I believe, I'm looking at Tim, but I can't really see. I believe there's one or two spots available on that. There could be up to three board members. And the information last time was so much information. And each team went through and did information. And then we had, she was very, very, very helpful. Like it was one of the most whole things, especially like advocating up in Salem. Because I was hearing like Tiffany said, it was things that we requested we didn't ask people, or like asking about schools. And several people mentioned they want SROs in the middle school. So then schools decided to bring SROs to the middle school. And there was a whole bunch of different things brought up. And it's so good. I just learned so, so much. Can I answer her question, Sarah?
I remember that you sat in on when all of the data was gathered and from that report, was it pre-pandemic or?
Yeah.
I just didn't know if you sat in on, you didn't sit in on the student sessions. You sat in on when everything was all gathered.
Right.
And on the SIA, there is students on that committee when we do the final thing. And so I did hear their input in the workshops sessions because then each table gets to be in, different people get to be in. So that sometime, there was a few times where we wanted to clarify things. So we asked the students as well, like should we ask more, you know, those kind of things. So no, I did not sit on the student section, but I did hear student input via students of our life. And we get to look at their surveys too. And I don't know if it's the same as before, but it was color-coded. So students were pink. And then there was different color coding for more staff
and more different families so that we knew what was green.
What do these meetings help?
Sorry, I can't.
Thank you. What does these meetings help the SIA committee?
The meetings are after school, and they can go into the early evening. It would be nice to have another board member. We have sent out invitations. So I can send out the invitation and you can accept it. We have representatives, right now, who have already accepted to represent our families, our certified staff, classified staff, administration. We have SOU represented, another community member, and we have a few students. Our student reps, the ones we have on the SIA committee have graduated before. So I invited any students that expressed a desire to be part of the committee from listening sessions, as well as students that ran for board representative and didn't are one of our ranks. This was another opportunity. um, are one of our ranks. This was another opportunity for them to have some leadership themselves, which we should have students as well.
Love that you did that. Thank you. And yes, please send me a hand.
I will, sure. And Dawn has a really good memory, how we color-code. I, we have, we have to sort through hundreds and hundreds of comments, as well as the overall survey data, but we take really good notes during the listening sessions. So um, I like to share work, so we will divide into teams, we'll take into, some will be students and families, we will color-code those, and sort out into our buckets of the SIA, so that we can make sure that we keep or strengthen the, the activities that our, our families and students and stakeholders find effective, and we can improve in areas of concern. And part of our listening sessions, we also ask what ideas people have, so sometimes we can start to tend to direct our activities. So I would imagine the SIA committee, because we've done it a few times now, and there are many people on the committee that this is, this is the third time around, I would imagine we have two or three. So I want to say Nancy, that Denise put in our documents on page 18, it gives the flyer, and it says the times and the link to those meetings, including the Spanish speaking ones, that you can find in there too.
Any other questions um, on this, and feel free to hold that grab so that um, to speak, so that Denise can hear you, and it will be coordinated, it makes her job easier, I believe. Okay. Thank you very much. It looks like the next is review for the next meeting and the agenda, intro or draft agenda into your blue folders. Again, I will have um, the, oh, issue. It does not list the superintendent evaluation in action items. And I believe that we have to do it in active items. We can check, but in the past, I know that that um, board chair reads something off. Um, and so then we'll do the regular, we'll have the teacher contracts and the surplus items, and then the regular items of information and discussion. Um, anything that, anyone thinks we need to add or?
Social system superintendent evaluation will be in action items, is it?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
I can give you these.
And this is just a draft. Um, we do the, you know, we talk, we have a meeting beforehand, and talk, and add some equipment, so. Uh, that helps me. Anything else? Okay. You're very done. I thank you all for being here and enjoying the meeting.